I can't about do that. True.
Meeting of the South Hunter Read Report Education is called to order. Adequate notice is required by the Open Public Meetings Act, which was provided on December 30th, 2021, by posting the notice with the respective clerks for the City of Lambeauville, Borough Stockton, County of West Amwell, and advertised on December 16th, 2021, and Hunterdon County Democrat in Trenton Times newspaper. Mike Slue?
Public leaders, certified United States American, two three hundred, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Sean Ellis, President. Jim Gallagher?
Here.
Ryan Keys?
Here.
Sean Lewis?
Here.
Trace Petrucci?
Here.
Dana Purcell?
Here.
Megan Warner?
Here.
Ronnie Tom Marino?
Here.
Kevin Kowalewski?
Here.
All right, updates from the PTO, PTA, and LAF. LAF, you can start off.
Hope you didn't regret that. I have a little bit to share with you guys. It's nice to see all of you. I know this is my first meeting in person of the year, so thank you, guys. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six grants that you guys have seen on the agenda. I thought I would just take a moment to talk to you a little bit about them. It's been a while since we've had a ton of grants to approve. We had a lot of fun at our last board meeting, talking about all of the grants. And I don't know if you guys ever see the applications, but the caliber of the programs, the thought that went into the programs was amazing, and they're wonderful. So just to give you a summary of, you know, what you guys will be seeing that was approved by us. So the first one came originally from Kelly Williamson, who's down at LPS, but it really is on behalf of all of the sixth grade libraries, classroom libraries. And it's specifically for adding diverse books to the classroom library. So she found that when she came in, there wasn't necessarily books that had characters and situations that mimicked all different walks of life, all different cultures. So it's specifically to infuse some diversity into the classroom libraries, specifically at the sixth grade level. You know, it might happen throughout the other grades as well. So that was approved, and she is very, all the sixth grade teachers are very excited about that one. The next one is also an elementary program. This is, I think we're calling it the Choices Assemblies. It's by a speaker named Ron James, and it will be at West Amwell and LPS. It was submitted by the counseling team, by Melissa and Jamie. Ron James, just to give you a little bit about him, he sounds really cool. Motivational speaker, author, life coach. He covers various topics related to making positive choices. And he talks about make every, make all of your next choices the best choice. It doesn't matter about what you did before or what you regret, but whatever your next one is, make it the right choice. And they were really passionate about this because they said it really gives the students opportunities to practice the decision-making skills in an environment where they can provide support and guidance. It's important to kind of have those opportunities so they can actually practice making those, like, decisions and life skills. So that's really cool. I think that's actually happening in February, if I'm not mistaken. Don't quote me on the date. The next one actually is really cool. It spans every single student in the district at all the schools, so K to 12. It's a series of assembly programs bringing the civil rights movement to life. So there's going to be different assemblies that are age-appropriate based on, you know, the school and the audience. And they're bringing in a company called Young Audiences of New Jersey. It's specifically to gain knowledge of the civil rights movement, as well as gain new perspectives regarding the movement and perspectives of people and minority groups. They're hoping that it really is going to help the kids build character traits, you know, that are what we focus on, care, respect, appreciation of all people. So that seems very interesting because it actually brings the civil rights movement to life through these assembly programs versus just kind of sitting and learning about it in school. The next one is the Shakespeare Theater of New Jersey. So they're like a traveling theater company. So they're coming for Romeo and Juliet. That is just a high school program, but all the students will get to go to one of the performances through their English class. So prior to the company coming, they're going to be reading, analyzing, just, you know, various works of art by Shakespeare. But the exciting piece is the opportunity to actually see it as it was meant to be, as a live onstage work of art and a play. And they'll have post-show workshops as well. So that's exciting. Two more, I'm getting there. Hatties Town Field Trip. So this one is the Theater and Social Justice Class and Club Students. This we had approved last year, 2020 maybe, I forget, and it was canceled due to COVID. This one is really interesting. It's a multi-award-winning musical, but it explores the themes of justice, power, faith, and hope. They use the, you know, Greek mythologies to kind of bring to life these current events. It's supposed to be amazing. I have never seen it, but I hope to. So that one. And then the last one, I saved the best for last, I think. So this one is, so Chris Heron. So I don't know if you guys know about him, but this program is amazing. It was brought forth from the Phys Ed Department, and it's in conjunction with Hunterdon Central. And I think it would be good to, like, maybe send the grant application around because it talks a lot about, like, what the program is and how amazing he is. So he is a former NBA player who battled with addiction. And now all he does is travel around the schools. And he actually, sorry, he did this, I guess, program at Delaware Valley in 2021, actually. And his whole thing that he talks about is the first day. So the insight that he realized is when people talk and discuss drug addiction, they usually picture an individual who's been battling with addiction for quite some time. His approach discusses someone's first day with addiction and what an individual's going through that pushes them towards addiction. It's very real, it's very age-appropriate. And it's, there'll be a school assembly, and there's also going to be a parent session as well that will be combined between South and Central. And this is not until October, they just had to book the date. So the LAF is really excited. We're going to be partnering on this program because it hits on a very, very important, you know, part of mental health for all of the kids. So that one was a biggie. Let me just make sure I didn't. Okay, his last point that he wanted me to mention was that in Health and Phys Ed, they usually discuss mental health and addiction, but they have to teach from PowerPoints and films and try and make it as real as possible. This really gives them an opportunity to bring it to life, especially in this post-COVID world where kids might be struggling a little bit more with expressing themselves. So those are all the grants. I'm sorry that took so long, but I feel like we've earned it because we didn't really talk about any for a long time. The, and we don't ever try to get fixated on numbers, but just in this kind of run of the past month and a half, it was over $20,000 in grants that we're so happy to give. So I'll use that as a nice transition to the fundraisers that we have coming up because we know we can't do grant money without fundraising. So the first one, and nothing is on the website, but we'll be sending information out to all of the parents in the district, you know, as soon as everything is posted. I hope you guys will consider coming to both of these. The first one is on March 4th. It is a beer tasting event that will be at Chive. There's this guy that someone knows. His name is Scott something, I'm going to, Scott Stevens. Apparently, those of you who know about beer, he is a diplomed beer sommelier. There's only, like, two people in the whole US that have this title, so it's just a beer tasting, and there's going to be food and a whole bunch of stuff. And we are raffling off. Oh, my God, is this my kids calling me? Sorry. Okay, that's fun. The other cool thing is we got donated a Vermont cottage, which is just gorgeous, and it sleeps eight, and that will be one of the cool things that we auction off at that event. So that's coming up. And then the last one is our auction. After two years of being canceled, come, you know what, like, I won't curse, but this auction is happening. It's going to be Saturday, March 26th. It's at Sargentsville Fire Station Ballroom. I heard the food is going to be off the chain. Oh, my Lord, God, what is happening here? So, you know, more information to come, obviously. We will, of course, be asking the community to help us with donations and things that we can raffle off. So if you guys know of anyone who has any great things to help us raise money for the students, let us know. I'm sorry it took so long. Thanks, guys.
Obviously, that was amazing, and all the support. I mean, every application and in a timely manner, I might add, that's a lot of information to get through, so thank you on behalf of the district.
And please encourage the teachers, administrators to keep, like, the applications coming, like, we review them every month, and they were so amazing. So I hope it keeps up with that velocity.
All right, thank you, Janelle. PTO or PTA? Anybody want to give an update? I don't see anybody, right? PTA? Is she?
So Stephanie Ballmer, LPS PTA. Good to see everyone. I just wanted to say that our December toy drive was a really great success. We've never done this in my time at LPS, and I just wanted to thank everyone who was able to donate to it. It was just an amazing outpouring of generosity, and I know Fisherman's Mark was really grateful and said we brought a lot of smiles to families in the community. So, so thanks for that. We had the help of the Student Council, too, so it was really nice to sort of work with multiple organizations all together. It's one of our goals this year. Shout out to our sixth grade fundraising teams. They've put a lot of work in the last couple of months trying to come up with some creative new fundraisers for the sixth grade class trip, a new pastry fundraiser, a recycled sneaker fundraiser. We just finished up the Christmas tree collection fundraiser, which brought in a couple thousand dollars. Thank Ronnie, I know, was really involved with that. So thanks to everyone who put in effort and is continuing to put in effort into that fundraising mission this year. I think we're got some things lined up, and it's good to see the students and families all coming together to try to make this work. Our spring planning for other events is in the works, so just sort of things to keep an eye out for more information. We've got a, we're planning a local book fair with the Frenchtown Bookshop, which will be something new for us to try, breaking away from scholastic a little bit to see what we can do again to build some networks with local, in the local community, with businesses in the local community. That will be in April. We're looking at an outdoor spring dance in early May. And we're working with Mrs. Johnson, the art teacher, on a student art in the community event that we're going to try a little pop-ups through the fall, through the late winter and hope to do something kind of big in the spring. So stay tuned for all of that.
Thank you. All right, PTO?
Hi, Jessica Hardigan, West Amwell PTO. The PTO is hosting a shopping event at Eight Hands Farm and Bee Company on Berry Road on February 5th from 2:00 to 4:00. The plan was to help out a local business and do something fun for the parents. Everyone can mark their calendars for Social Distancing Saturday for the West Amwell Scholastic Book Fair on March 19th. It should be 10:00 to 2:00, that's what we did last year, but you could check for updates. And we don't have a ton going on because of the state of the world, but we're hoping to maybe do a spring fundraiser for the parents again, kind of holding out hope for that. It'll be outdoors probably in May, so thank you.
Correspondents are posted. Approval of the minutes, any motion? Show of vote.
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Sure. All right, everyone, thank you. Before I get to my mid-year check-ins on our district goals, I did want to just mention in reference to COVID. So a couple things. The good news is, and I know I sent out, you know, I think we had five today, but we are on the downswing compared to where we were when we came back from winter break. So, you know, it was actually nice last week not to have, there was a few days where I didn't have to send anything out about COVID cases. So I'm hoping we're heading in the right direction. I think there's a, you know, a trend right now across our state that we're kind of hopefully over the curve and on our way down, you know. And thank you to the parents just for, you know, the last couple of weeks, there's been a lot of changes in the guidance. You know, I think in one week, we had three different changes on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from the Health Department. So I appreciate your flexibility and keeping up to date, and the goal all along has been, obviously, to keep our kids in school the best that we possibly can. And, you know, our staff has done an amazing job. It was not easy coming back from winter break and some of the things that they had to deal with from winter break, and they did an amazing job of flexibility and just all hands on deck to make sure that we can keep our doors open. So a huge shout out to the staff for being able to do that and supporting our kids. So hopefully, we're moving in the right direction with that. I thought it was a good opportunity to kind of do a mid-year check-in on our district goals now that we're almost through half of the year, just to kind of see where we are and how we're progressing. So I wanted to start out first with just talking about our goal number one was about blended and personalized learning techniques. So just to kind of explain a little bit about what this is about, we embarked kind of on a journey this year, working with a group of teachers. We have a cohort of 12 teachers right now, district-wide, that we're working with to really focus on how to maximize small group instruction when there's the utilization of technology, non-technology, collaboration, you know, having the opportunity to work together to problem-solve, and most importantly, free up the teacher to what they do best, and that's to interact with as many students as possible during the course of a lesson. And we're focusing on a model called station rotation, where there could be three or four different stations in a classroom, where students are working collaboratively on an assignment, other students may be working at their own pace, using some type of online version, another group may be doing small group instruction with the teacher and actually getting additional support. So that's where we are focused. We did do a full day in-service back in August with all of our teachers in the cohort. We have someone, a consultant that we're working with that's doing on-the-ground, in-the-trenches coaching, and comes monthly to work with our teachers and actually make coaching points and co-teach with our teachers. And then we have after-school sessions throughout the year that have been planned, and we're in progress with all of those right now. We have them coming up in February. And then the goal would be is that we really would try to codify those promising practices that we established throughout the year and continue with a cohort two and utilize our cohort one members that participated this year to help turnkey as we move forward. So it's a big piece from our instructional practices of the type of environment that we're trying to create for our students, and so far, we're making good progress on that goal. Cultural background as far as differentiation and, you know, some of our cultural responsive planning and cultural responsive instruction. So this has been ongoing. We started this last year, and we continue, and you can just kind of see, you know, we're continuing to do training with our staff in this area and looking at our curriculum as well, focusing on not just our teaching population, but other folks that are supporting students throughout the school day. That's important. We have an assessment committee that we've established specifically. We've had a pre-K 6 assessment committee. We haven't had a 7-12. So we created a 7-12 committee, and we're looking at things like grading practices, placement criteria for honors and AP, and it all goes in line with our equity work, just making sure that we're providing all of our students with equal access to classes. And looking at our grading practices, which I will tell you, full disclosure, is not a one-year venture, right? That is a several-year venture, just to take a look at what does a grade mean, what should it mean, how are we grading our students, is there's consistency in the way we're grading our students, and all those different pieces. Student discipline, so we started some work with restorative justice practices, and that is in progress. And really taking a look at, and it goes in line with some of the other things that you'll hear me share tonight, that it's not just about consequences for students, it's really important that there's an educational piece to hopefully change their behavior, depending upon what the situation is, and really restore them back into the community environment. We've done parent and guardian sessions, so back in November, we actually did a cultural responsive teaching right in this very room, Mr. Hewitt and I, which is still available online for anyone who wants to see it. And then we are in the process of reviewing our ESL program with an outside consultant, and that's in progress. And I anticipate that that individual will probably come to the board in April with some findings and then recommendations moving forward for our ESL program. So we embarked this year formally on what's called professional learning communities. So professional learning communities are the ability for staff to collaborate with one another, to really take a look at what should our students know and be able to do, which is really driven from our standards. How do we know that they're getting it? What do we do if they're not getting it? Our important pieces, and what's the data that really goes along that determines that? So we spent some time in the beginning of the year, really in the summer, doing some training with our administrative team on PLCs. And then we did training with our teachers on PLCs, and most, probably the most important piece is providing the time, right? The time within the school day and really getting creative with our time to allow teachers to collaborate. And there's some challenges with that, to be quite honestly, with our schedules that we run. So we've really been taking a look at things like our faculty meeting time that we have twice a month, and obviously, we don't need to have teachers come in a room and go over 10 bullet points of something they could read in an email, but if we can utilize that time for better professional development and provide that time for them to be able to collaborate with one another, it's a better use of that time. And then establishing SMART goals for the year as far as related to student achievement. And then throughout the year, our teachers are really focusing on that data collection towards those SMART goals, and that will be part of their end-of-the-year process. And this is something that will continue. This will be ingrained within what we do each and every year is that professional learning community time. So social emotional learning, which I think is always going to be part of our goals, and some of this you'll see is ongoing, you know, as far as training staff in the areas of SEL and doing programming for, you know, support staff as well, all in progress. And then activities that we've done, and I know Mr. Hewitt's been a huge advocate of having SEL nights and, you know, having parents either virtually or in person, and I know all those presentations are actually available on our website. And then also surveys, so I know there was some surveys that just went out, written we got from winter break, trying to collect information on the type of things as far as we develop our district professional development plan for next year. We wanted input from the staff, our students, and obviously, our parent community. So that has been completed. Attitudes in Reverse. So we are going to embark on a therapy dog program in the district, and we have already researched this, and we will be looking to implement this next year. And the goal will be that we will eventually have a therapy dog in each one of our school buildings. So we have a cohort of some folks who are interested in this. Some of their spouses are not happy because they went out and got a dog, just to be part of this program, so I'm sure I'll get some grief for that. But we are, there is an, a organization called Attitudes in Reverse that really focuses on school-based programs for therapy dogs and the impact that a therapy dog can have on a school environment, on an everyday basis and unfortunately, when things are, can be difficult. So, you know, times of the year when stress can be high, high school during AP testing, different things along those lines, therapy dogs can make a huge impact, and there's research behind that. So we will be embarking on that with a training cohort starting this summer, and then the goal, and it's a pretty extensive process. It's, you know, it's not just, you know, I have a dog and I want him to be a therapy dog. You're talking a 10- to 11-month training regimen before they'd be ready to be in the school environment. So that's very exciting. We launched Hunterdon County Safe Schools app, so you may remember seeing an email in the beginning of the year about that. We've had students that have utilized that app already. The first day we sent it out, we had a student that afternoon utilize it for some pretty important stuff. And that's just an anonymous tool where students can report if there's concerns, whatever it may be about their well-being, another student's well-being, or something that they've heard that we need to kind of follow up on. We've implemented for the first time an employee assistance program that's free to all of our employees and their families. So that is support that, you know, obviously, during normal times, life can sometimes be challenging, but over the last two years, it's even been more challenging. So a lot on our staff members' plates. This is an opportunity for them to get the support that they need, or perhaps family members that live in their own household that need some additional support. So that's been a huge success. And then last year, we started with the Care Plus New Jersey program that provides a lot of online webinars for parents in a variety of different topics, schizophrenia, addiction, substance abuse, you know, anxiety, all the different things that our parents sometimes struggle with their children with, and that's ongoing where we provide those workshops throughout the year. And then our last goal was continued work on the district safety, security, and facilities. So we do have a district safety committee that we established last year, and the goal of that was to kind of work on developing a comprehensive district safety plan to harden our facilities, which is in progress. As many know, I, you know, talked about last spring and guaranteed to the community that I would do a program review of our district safety and security of all of our different processes, and that is in progress. And if you, you know, look at, I have a timeline right now, you can kind of see, I had a lot of things that were part of that review process that have been completed, variety of focus groups with students, parents, and then I have a big one, just a quick advertisement for this Thursday night at 6:00 in this very room. If any parents want to talk about district safety and security, I would invite you to attend, and it would be a forum for you to kind of share your ideas, your thoughts about the district safety and security protocols that we're utilizing. So that's important. And then conduct a safety audit, so that will be towards the end of the year. There is a site called REMSight Assessment Tool that is supported by the Department of Education that we'll be utilizing, you know, as we get closer to the end of the year. So a lot happening. I will, just as a note, be presenting the findings of the district safety and security review at our February, I think 28th it is, Board of Education meeting. Now, I thought it was also a good time to kind of take a step back and reflect on the board and district achievements over the last two years. You know, one of the things that we try to teach our kids the best that we possibly can is take a step back and reflect, because it's a really powerful exercise. And sometimes we get very caught up in day-to-day, and we don't do that, even as adults. So we thought it would be really important to kind of reflect on what have we achieved over the last two years. And what you'll see is, for educational programming, and I have categories, first of all, let's not forget that we've successfully, as a district, navigated this pandemic, and we've kept our school doors open for in-person instruction throughout that entire time, which I can say that a lot of other districts have not, right? And it's been a challenge, and it hasn't been easy, and it's been stressful, but we've done it because that was what was right for our kids. So beyond everything else that I'm going to talk about, let's not forget about that because some districts, quite honestly, only focused on that. That was really their only focus during this entire time. For our district, we continue to accomplish some amazing things while always having this kind of looming over in the background. So first thing I want to mention, K-8 assessments and benchmarks have been fully implemented throughout the district in reading, math, and writing. So what does that mean? That means throughout the year, students are taking a benchmark assessment periodically, typically fall, winter, and spring, and our teachers are taking a look at that data and seeing where they fall and how is that going to impact their instruction moving forward. That's a huge piece because data drives instruction, and we have that built in for all of our K-8 students, so that's a huge success. We also have a guided reading program that now has been fully implemented over the last two years in K-6. All of our K-3 teachers, our English and second language teachers, our standards with support, and our K-6 special education teachers have been trained in Orton-Gillingham. I'm going to tell you something, this is rare. Most districts, you'll find special education teachers would be trained in Orton-Gillingham, and usually just elementary. The fact that we have all of our K-3 teachers trained in Orton-Gillingham, which is which is an amazing support program to help our kids with reading, is an amazing accomplishment that we've done, and that's something we should be proud of. We've done a full program review last year of our college planning process with recommendations that we implemented and made some major changes in the way we're doing things as far as the college planning process. We're doing a program review right now of our ESL program, which will impact next year. So this is a biggie that most of you don't know about. And it's still in the planning stages. So the South Hundred Regional School District applied back in November for something that came out from the state called preschool expansion, preschool expansion aid. Only two districts right now in Hundred and County were actually granted this aid. What does that mean? It means that the goal will be in the next five years that we will be able to provide preschool for free for every child that lives in our district. That is a huge win. And the way we do that is a variety of different ways. We can try to utilize space that we have in our own buildings to run a preschool program for all kids. Right now, we only have two sections of preschool in our district. The formula that the state uses, based on the number of kids that are in our community, they're saying that we probably would run about five classes, and that would serve us all of our kids. So right now, what we're working on is developing a partnership, perhaps, with some of our area preschools where we can work together on this, utilize their space, but guarantee that all the curriculum is universal, so that transition from preschool to kindergarten could be seamless. And every student would get it for free. And the funding would come from the state. And we're working on that as we speak. The other nice thing is, and we just drafted a letter today, because we've gotten this aid, we are going to be able to reimburse all of our parents for this year who paid for preschool so far. And then moving forward, they won't have to pay for the remainder of the year. So again, the goal is, we would never want a student not to be able to have preschool because they can't, the family can't afford it. And this is a huge win for us. It's a lot of work, full disclosure, right? Usually when you get money from the state, it is a lot of work. It's never easy. But it's well worth it. Because at the end of the day, if we can walk away with every student getting preschool, that's an amazing accomplishment. So you're going to hear more about that. We're still in the planning, but we're excited that we're going to be able to bring that to our district. So more with the educational. So we expanded our, we have an academy program for our special education students. You've heard me maybe talk about that with program expansion and what we're looking to do to keep more of our students in-house that have practical learning skills focused for them as far as what they're going to be doing with us. So we're looking to expand that. And then our learning, um, language disabled, our LLD students as well, expansion of that program for our elementary students. This year, we entered into a dual enrollment program with Seton Hall. So we have students that are taking one of two classes, either AP Lit in composition or AP Language in composition. They're also gaining, if they were interested in, three college credits for each class, right? So if they were taking both, they could get six credits. And that's with Seton Hall. That's a pretty cool relationship that we build with Seton Hall University. We've implemented a new computer science program at the high school, which we didn't have before. We've implemented a new pre-engineering program with Project Leadaway, which we didn't have before. We have a new TV media program, which we've implemented at the high school, which we didn't have before. We started podcasting this year that we're hopefully looking to expand over the next couple of years. We have a new social justice class that was implemented last year at the high school. You heard about one of their grants this evening. We've added honors history, AP art studio, and honors environmental science courses at the high school. We've also added more diverse books for our 7th to 12th grade students in ELA. It's really important as part of our equity work that the resources, the books that our students are reading are representative of them. And that was a lot of work Mr. Hewitt had taken on with our teachers. We can't forget about sustainability and the fact that we've had the LPS in the middle school and the high school recognized as bronze award winners. And we're hoping to get West Amwell on board this year, and the green team's been working on that. And then, as I mentioned before, we developed three-year equity plan and have done a lot as far as the last year, almost two years now. And that will continue to move forward and a lot of these different things hit on that. So that's just the educational programming that's been achieved over the last few years. Then we start looking at our facilities. So from the board side, again, installation of a brand-new, beautiful track at the middle school and the high school, installation of a new soccer field at the middle school and the high school, installation of an irrigation system for the soccer and the football field, new scoreboards for the football and soccer fields, along with the high school gym, a complete security upgrade in the middle school and the high school, including secured vestibule, 68 cameras, and a brand-new door swipe system with badges. So no more keys, swipes, all of our staff have with the IDs. We're in the process right now of doing a full upgrade on our audio, visual, and lighting components in our auditorium for our music and theater programs. That space really hadn't been touched since the time that it opened. Our staff came to us and said, listen, in order to provide 21st century experiences for our students in these programs, we need to do some upgrades. The technology is outdated, and we're in the process of doing that right now for that particular facility. And then, one of the most important, an assessment of our facility needs and developing a referendum plan that was voted on and approved by the voters, which is in progress. So again, facilities. Student and staff mental health supports. So we've done crisis prevention and intervention training and conscious discipline training. So what I'll say about that is to kind of summarize is, it really is a different approach with working with students. And I would say the foundational key point of it is developing strong relationships with our kids. That's one of the most important pieces. Where traditional classrooms, it's more, this is the rules. You break the rules, here's the consequences. It's my way or the highway. That's not the way it is. It's not the way to get the most out of our kids. It's really developing that community relationship. It's a shared space. It's not just the teacher's space, but the adult in the room. And having kids really buy in, so it's really a philosophical mind shift. And we've been able to provide that training with our staff. We've reallocated our 7-12 counseling program. So you remember, we did the counseling review. And we used to have a counselor who, you know, basically followed certain kids to 10th grade, and then another counselor picked them up in 11th grade and followed them through 11th and 12th. When we had our review, it was talked about that that's not a best practice. So now we have a counselor that's focusing on our 7th and 8th grade students. And then we have two counselors who are focusing on 9th to 12th that are split up by letters of the alphabet. And they're following those students all four years. So they really get to know those students for four years. When it gets time for the college planning process, writing letters of recommendation, they're going to know those students and their families inside and out. So that was a huge accomplishment. I already mentioned about the employee assistance program and the Care Plus and the therapy dog program, which I'm really excited about for next year. Technology. Anyone who needs internet access in our community will get it from the school district as far as our students are concerned. So that was something last year that we made it a point that we have access points if we need them, hotspots, and anyone who needs one will get one. And continue, and not just for COVID. Forever if they need it. We don't want to have any student who goes home and is not, or is at a disadvantage because they don't have internet access. So that is something we've been working on. New laptops for all staff, right here, I'm really happy about that. Android tablets for all, um, pre-K 12 and 1 students. Document cameras, which was purchased by LAEF. And go in any classroom, you're going to see them. Especially elementary, they use them every day, right? Those document cameras. And basically what that is, is it's a camera that magnifies the image and brings it up on the projector. And when they're annotating and doing different things, whether it's a writing or whatever it may be, the kids can see everything the teacher's doing, which are pretty powerful. So I know that, you know, before last year, we were kind of all over the place with the way assignments were communicated. And we made a concerted effort as a district to use Google Classroom, especially during COVID, but that will continue. And I know in the primary grades, we use more CSO as our primary means of communication. But the goal is that we didn't want to have, you know, parents and students going to seven different places depending upon the number of classes students have. We wanted one place and we were able to achieve that. So cybersecurity training for all staff. That's important. As if you're following the news, we had a district right across the bridge today, Pensbury, who got hit, cybersecurity attack. All right? And we've had Hillsborough that's gotten hit with a cybersecurity attack, and Freehold Regional. So more and more schools. So we made it an effort with our technology department to use a program called Know Before. And we did a complete cybersecurity training in the beginning of the year with all of our staff. We now have two-factor authentication for all of our staff. And just recently, we literally did, had an outside vendor do a penetration test to try to hack into our system. And we fared very, very well. And just had an opportunity to go over the report, which I'll be eventually sharing with the board. So a lot of things are happening in this area. We can't take it for granted, because there's another district right now that's been crippled because obviously of a security attack. So something that's very, very important. And then streaming service. So, you know, we're now streaming all of our basketball games, all of our football games, graduation, different events that can happen out in the stadium that we didn't have that access before.
Board meetings.
Board meetings.
That's next.
Oh, yeah.
That's next. Don't jump ahead, don't jump ahead. All right, communication. So live streaming our board meetings, which also includes a Google forum for public comment. So even if folks are at home and they can't be here, they can still participate. Our monthly newsletter, which hopefully you got on Friday that I had sent out, that has a lot of animation and links and videos and all kinds of stuff. I established the district parent council. So that's a group that meets once a month with me, representation of all three schools, our PTO, our PTA, to really talk about different things. It's a sounding board for the superintendent, for the community, to be able to share ideas and for folks to share ideas with me. Did a redesign of our district website. So I know one of the things that kind of was going on, we had a school messenger and listserv and a lot of different communication vehicles. And we made the decision as a district to use school messenger and school messenger only. And that's what our principals use, and that's what I use with all the messaging, so parents know it'll be in one place. Board docs. So the program that we use for all of our agendas, our board policies, our committing minutes, was a bit labor-intensive to kind of navigate through. And we brought on board docs in August. And the hope is it's much more of a user-friendly platform for our community members. And then, if you're not aware, one of our committees has really been working on trying to identify families in our district that live in our district but have made the decision not to send students to our district schools. And why is that? All right? So whether it's meeting with those families or surveying those families, trying to get an idea, are there other things that perhaps we should be focusing on that would attract more students who live in the community to stay in our schools? And that's an ongoing process. And then finally, and it's, I know it seems like a long time ago, but the efforts that we did as a district and as a board with helping out the community with Hurricane Ida, between the food pantry at LPS, providing childcare at Caballo Park, the cleanup efforts by our students who were out in the community, that was a huge accomplishment during a pandemic. And many people in this room played a role in that as well. So as I conclude, that's a lot. That's a lot of things that we've been able to accomplish as a district in the last two years, all while going through a pandemic and continuing to experience today a pandemic. So the Board of Education should be very, very proud. Where other districts, like I said, have focused more on, let's just be in survival mode. We made the decision to say, we got to continue to move forward. As much as the pandemic is weighing on all of us, we got to keep moving forward for progress. And we still have a lot of work to do, a lot of work to do. But we've made great strides, and the Board of Education should be proud of that. So I would like to open it up to the board members. If anyone has any comments or anything you want to share in particular about some of these things on this list, but you should be proud of your accomplishments.
Is there not either?
Well, sir, I gotta say that one of the major things, when I look at this, it really shows a dedication to just increasing the quality of education and the quality of the emotional wellness of the kids. And so it's implementation of, there's a lot of work represented in this. So it's something you're, you know, proud of everybody here, proud of the administrative staff, proud of, proud of the staff as, as these things are implemented. It represents a ton of work and a lot of consideration in implementing best practices. So that's a really huge thing. One of the things that you mentioned that I, I like to highlight is the, the employee assistance program as one of those things that I think it's important to look at the fact that that's not through like the state legislation requirement. It wasn't through a contract negotiation. It was because a need was identified. And so a program was put in place to support our staff. And not just our staff, but their staff's families. And I think that that really shows a commitment to, to our school community that I'm very proud to be a part of.
I'd like, I'd like to follow up on that and just, yeah, say, I, I'm new to the board. And a lot of these things are really outstanding accomplishments, particularly looking at the blended personalized learning as, you know, a way to, as Ronnie mentioned, really just hone in on what techniques work and what's going to achieve, you know, improve academic achievement. I also want to say the pre-K, pre-pre-K program, wow, really impressive. And that, that was kind of news to me, whether I missed it or not. But just really good work in those areas.
Anybody else?
Just want to thank you, Tony, because I think that's a big part of a lot of things that are, that are up on the screen there. You and your administrative team. I just think that we have been done, couldn't have done without you and your leadership. It's nice to see everything. Because I feel like once we're going through, we don't realize how much of an impact is being made. So I think it's important to see all this and it's continued motivation to just keep improving.
Yeah, I echo that, Tony. I mean, definitely two years since when you joined, right? Like little, little under, right? Going up to May-ish, June, right? But looking at the bullets, and Ronnie touched on it a little bit, which you look at a bullet and you don't realize, it's like months of work behind that bullet and months of time and different, and the number of people on your administrative team and what they had to do. And, you know, even just the ideas to, you know, here we had a plan, we had a goal. But at the end of the day, the things that you came up with that kind of addressed the need was really, really stellar. And having seen how, how we were kind of working forward in the past and kind of what we've achieved to address some of the things that we had heard going in. And even when we first started talking to you and you joined, and these are, these are exactly along the lines of what we were hoping for. So, you know, definitely keep up the motivat-, I love the fact that we're reflecting, because you're right. If we've been so focused on the task at hand lately, then I feel like this really puts into perspective the amount of work and effort that have gone to all the things we're trying to accomplish with the schools, you know, the school district, so, so thank you.
All right, I'll finish up here. Just, yeah, again, just, you know, reiterate my thanks to our leader, Mr. Suzo. I remember, you know, when we were first going through the hiring process and, you know, it's like, oh my God, this is going to be the longest thing ever to try to find a next great leader from our school district to bring this all home and facilities and everything like that. And I think we came together as a board and worked as a team. And, you know, sitting in front of you now as our superintendent. And it was so easy to see that he went right to the front of the head as we were doing these interviews. It was amazing. And, you know, bringing him on has changed this district for the better, big time. And I'd like to thank him and his leadership and the administrative staff and the teachers. We couldn't have accomplished all this stuff here without working together as a team. You know, with the public perception of the board or, or our different towns is, it doesn't matter. Because this right here proves that we all came together as nine, along with all the staff in the district, to work together as a team. There's no way this would have got accomplished if this board and our staff didn't work together as a great team. There's no way we could have done this and with a great leader. So this just proves that, you know, this board has the, you know, the willpower and the teamwork to, to keep moving on and keep making this district as great as possible. And our number one job is to do what's best for every child in this district. And keep moving that forward and give them the best education they can. And that's what we'll end up doing. We got three new members that are jumping in right now, hopefully ready to take on this team effort. And we're going to move this forward. And hopefully we can bring this referendum home and get these new buildings built and really, you know, give these kids and staff what they deserve. And I have no, I have no doubt that under his leadership and, and the board working together, we're going to be able to achieve all this. So we just got to keep moving ahead, block out some of the negative noise outside and work together as a team like we've done for the past two years. And I think we're all, all committed to that, and that's all why we're here. So again, thank you all to the staff of this district. You know, we, we couldn't have done this without everyone's help. You know, our special groups, PTO, PTA, LAF, absolutely fantastic. We couldn't have done it without everybody's help and coming together. So we, we've went through a lot of things the past two years in this district. You know, a lot of heartaches, a lot of natural disasters and everything like that. And we, we've come out stronger on the other side. And I think we still can. So again, thank you all. So again, thank you all.
That's the conclusion of my report.
All right, moving on to public comment, right?
Yeah.
All right, we're gonna start public comments, just gotta read a few things here. We have procedures and requirements that include standards of conduct that need to be followed by members of the public during public comments. If a member of the public becomes disruptive during a public meeting, including during any period for public comment, the member of the board charged with running the public meeting shall warn a disruptive member of the public that continued disruption may result in being prevented from speaking during the public meeting or removed from the public meeting. Disruptive conduct includes sustained inappropriate behaviors, such as, but not necessarily limited to, shouting, interruption, and use of provanity, or comments seen as abusive, obscene, or defamatory. Members of the public will have three minutes to address the board, you're asked to state your first and last name and your municipality. Public comment is now open, if anybody would like to come up and say something? Please come on up.
Hello, I'm Elizabeth O'Donnell, I live in Lambertville, actually, I live right on North Union Street, and I'm very impressed with your agenda here, everything looks really good. What really got me was at the end where you said about Hurricane Ida, so I would just like to thank everyone on the board and the South Hunterden community, I get a little emotional, because my house was really badly damaged, and I didn't even have to lift a finger or ask anyone to come, I know you had everything organized, but two of the teachers, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Riley, came and moved appliances with my daughter, they moved the refrigerator, they moved the washing machine, put it out for trash, and I went down to LPS and I saw Mr. Suso down there, and almost started to cry because just how organized it was, all the students that came by, you know, from the different sports, they just came and started helping, I would turn around and like six people were there, and then they would go to the neighbor's house. So, I just want to thank everybody for the efforts. My daughter graduated in 2020, which was a rough year, but it's just really good to see how the community came together, and I want to thank everyone for that.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Sherad Durkey from Lambertville, and that was really nice, the, the review and everything that the board members said about it, and this may sound hokey, and I don't know if it's possible, but I know that we, when we come up to speak, we have to identify, I have to say I'm Sherad Durkey from Lambertville, and I understand that, I think it's because you need to know that I live within the district, and that you're able to confirm that. I'm just wondering, thinking about us as a community, is there a way we can do that so that when we come up, we're seen as a community member and not a member of a specific municipality? So, could I say, I'm a member of the district, and if you have my name and know that, you can cross-check it, or I even think it would be preferable if I said I'm Sherad Durkey and I live at my street address, because again, I, I'm in Lambertville, I don't think that street address is in Stockton or West Damwell, but even if there is a repeat, it would be easy to find that I am who I am. So, it's just a little psychological thing, but if that's possible, I think that might help, so that at least when we're in this space, we're all part of South Hunterden, and we're not members of Lambertville, Stockton, and West Damwell. So, just a suggestion, and if it's possible, I think it would be great. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, we will have another one at the end.
We have one.
Yep, we'll have another one, so we'll close that one down.
We have the people.
Oh, Boobaform, sorry.
We have one from home, and I have it up here, Corky Brown, Lambertville. Related to the upcoming safety and security review, the continued inclusion of an armed class three officer in each of our schools remains unjustified, constituents have asked for evidence and data for many years now, the district policy appears to be based on white-centric feeling of safety, where nationwide evidence strongly suggests that officers' presence, presence has a disproportionality, negative, and harmful effect on people of color. What is the justification for the district's policy?
Just one, right? That's it. All right, now, yep. All right, we're gonna close the public comment down, and we're gonna move on to buildings, grounds, our agenda, transportation finance, Diana?
Sure. So, we met on Thursday, we actually talked about a lot of things that Tony had mentioned, stole my thunder again.
Sorry.
It's okay. We met with our auditor, there's gonna be more to follow on that, but one of the key takeaways, which we can see with a lot of the things that we accomplished facility-wise, they were very impressed and complimentary about our planning skills in terms of facilities, our long-range facility planning, so, and hats off to our administrative team for what happened. We talked a lot about the pre-school expansion, which I'm kind of positive, Tony talked about in all the committees, because it was so important, just echo Sean was saying, which is, wow, I think that's a great thing that we're gonna be able to offer to our district. Other than that, it's really the key things that I wanted to highlight, so, with that, I'd like to move items A through J. Second?
All right, open for discussion, anybody have anything to add? Board? All right, Andrew?
Roll call, Sean Ellis.
Do a roll call.
Oh, yes, yes.
Jim Gallagher?
Yes.
Brian Keats?
Yes.
Sean Lewis?
Yes.
Trace Petrucci?
Yes.
Diana Purcell?
Yes.
Megan Warner?
Yes.
Ronnie Tamarino?
Yes.
Kevin Kowalski?
Yes.
Moving on to personnel, Megan?
We met on Thursday as well, just a couple of quick highlights, we're bringing on, as you can see, a permanent district's governor, which is kind of a hot commodity in New Jersey, as Tony mentioned in our meeting, so, that's a big win, and we also have two bus drivers coming on, hopefully getting their, they pass their written tests, so we're just waiting for the road tests, but again, another hot commodity, we were able to find some people to come on board, so those are, I think, the two big highlights from our personnel meeting with that, I'd like to move items A through J.
Second. All right, open for discussion, anybody have anything to add? All right, Andrew?
Roll call though. Jim Gallagher?
Yes.
Brian Keats?
Yes.
Sean Lewis?
Yes.
Trace Petrucci?
Yes.
Diana Purcell?
Yes.
Megan Warner?
Yes.
Sean Ellis?
Yes.
Ronnie Tamarino?
Yes.
Kevin Kowalski?
Yes.
Eric? All right, recommend technology, Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Kowalski, the committee met on the evening of January the 13th, we discussed a number of things, one of those are the curriculum documents that are on the agenda for April tonight, which are related to the phys ed program, even though the documents say health and physical education, these are solely the phys ed program aspect of the curriculum, the health curriculum we will be looking at later. We did discuss hiring Colleen Luchko as a tutor, which I think was a name, already approved in personnel, Mr. Sefeli gave us a report on laptops, which Mr. Suso and Mr. Harris are enjoying the lightning-like speed of, I think they're all once, I'm not sure how old they were, but I believe they may have been running by the three point one. The, Vince also updated us, we talked about our internet security training for the staff and the board members that they're going through, which has meant we've got phishing attacks and deny active access to our system. One very interesting thing, which you will be hearing more about in the coming months, is that we are discussing an initiative that would provide some additional mental health supportive resources to our students and their families, our administrators have reviewed proposals from two organizations, one is Effective School Solutions, and the other is Rutgers University. Right now, I think we're leaning toward the Rutgers University program for several reasons, one of those is that Rutgers will provide a greater scope of services, including family support and counseling outside of the, outside of the school, and operates for the entire twelve months of the year, rather than ten months program, which the ESS program, the Rutgers program also came in at a lot of cost, which is something that we are interested in as well. So, for the next two years, the district will have federal grant money distributed through the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund, also the ESIR fund, which would pay for this program, so, we will be, we will be moving forward with that hopefully next month, and so as I say, you will hear more about it in super. So with that, I will make a motion to approve item A, the phys ed curriculum, and I'll ask for some more second time.
Second.
Any discussion?
Okay, roll call, starting with Brian Keats?
Yes.
Sean Lewis?
Yes.
Trace Petrucci?
Yes.
Diana Purcell?
Yes.
Megan Warner?
Yes.
Sean Ellis?
Yes.
Jim Gallagher?
Yes.
Ronnie Tamarino?
Yes.
Kevin Kowalski?
Yes.
Eric? Policy, Tracy?
We did meet this evening, we spoke about two policies and one regulation, the policy and regulation number one is related to sexual harassment of students, which is in your agenda, and then the second policy is around school nutrition, and specifically related to accounts and arrears and the handling of that with students and parents of the students. The one thing I'll comment around the regulation, again, this was a first read, so, for those of you on the board don't want to read that before our next meeting, and that will be presented for a second read in the February fourth evening. So with that, I need to... That's it, right? Can we approve this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I need to...
For a first read? So, I have a question.
Yes.
Is this policy eight five four zero also first reading, or is that?
They're all first. They're all firsts.
Okay.
So, item A.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Andrew?
Charlie, Sean Lewis?
Yes.
Trace Petrucci?
Yes.
Diana Purcell?
Yes.
Megan Warner?
Yes.
Sean Ellis?
Yes.
Jim Gallagher?
Yes.
Brian Keats?
Yes.
Ronnie Tamarino?
Yes.
Kevin Kowalski?
Yes.
Eric? All right, school and community, you're on it.
All right, school and community met, and really, the first part of the meeting focused on the role of the committee, and looked at our, how we keep an eye to strengthen in the communication between the district and the community for the purposes of identifying and addressing issues, but also improving programs and processing, and increasing trust through transparency. Tony talked about several of the things that we reviewed in that meeting, but improving communication using the tools that we already had available to us, including the website and social media and the listserv, so for consistency as well, and then there's also current efforts to provide tools to the teachers so that they can capture classroom activities, and that will help us in terms of balancing the highlights of student achievement, because right now it's very, it's sports-heavy. We also talked about our ongoing review of the out-of-district students, and really wanting to dig in to find out why are families choosing to send their children out of district. We know that, you know, that information would become critical as we look at where to target efforts for program expansion, I mean, we've already added some new offerings, including that TV and media, the computer science, the pre-engineering, and then we've really worked to enhance special education services. So the hope is that over time, these programs will meet the needs of our youth and in the interests of the youth, and so we'll, we'll retain and attract more students. We took a look at that, the board accomplishment presentation, and we all realized how incredibly impressive it is during a pandemic, and I keep thinking about, you know, all of the energy that every single one of us, you know, just gets, expends in the day-to-day just feeling, trying to stay safe, right? And when we don't have that kind of barrier, or when we don't have that kind of thing weighing over us, I can't even imagine how that we're going to be in the upcoming future. We looked at board, the committee goals for 2022, really looking at the pre-K expansion grant, and how to develop effective partners, partnerships within the community and the existing childcare providers, how to better engage the Latinx population, and how to really engage the, the community with the safety and security plan to get feedback and to keep the community informed of every single step of the process, from the review of the past program, from the recommendation for any modifications for the program, for the approval, for the implementation, how important it is for the community to be kept informed about that. So, I have nothing to approve.
One other thing I'll just mention, just as a reminder, I want to pull it up, there is a revised calendar on there, we've used all of our three snow days, so, just a reminder that at this point, first of all, we lost, you know, that Friday before Memorial Day that we were supposed to have off in the last snow, and based on our calendar, if we have another snow day, we start tapping into the end of the year, so, it would mean that instead of the 16th being the last day, we would move graduation to the 17th, so hopefully we won't have any more snow, but I just wanted to make everyone aware, I'll send out a revised calendar tomorrow, it is posted on our website, but just keep that in the back of your mind.
So, Tony, just to clarify on that one, the sixth grade graduation would also move?
More than likely, yes.
Okay, so, well, the sixth grade and the high school graduation could move ultimately to as late as...
If we have another snow day, yeah.
You do need a motion to approve item B.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Second. All right, open for discussion, routine items, anybody got anything else, or you're good?
No.
No, that was...
All right, roll call.
It was for the calendar.
Yeah, that was for the calendar. Do you need a new roll call for the calendar? I can do a voice vote.
I'll tell the other ones here.
All those in favor? All right. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries?
The routine information items, need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve items A and B.
Second, all right, open for discussion.
Anybody got any?
Discussion on those two items? All right.
I'm sorry, just, this is true that you may want to note that the state law has changed, right?
Yes, so, it has, so that was just signed by the governor last week, so you'll now be informed when there, when we have a, we are required when we have a safety and security drill, to inform parents by the end of the day that there was a drill that took place. So, that just literally was signed by the governor last week.
Okay. Andrew?
Roll call, Trace Petrucci?
Yes.
Diana Purcell?
Yes.
Megan Warner?
Yes.
Sean Ellis?
Yes.
Jim Gallagher?
Yes.
Brian Keats?
Yes.
Sean Lewis?
Yes.
Ronnie Tamarino?
Yes.
Kevin Kowalski?
Yes.
Eric?
No. Please, roll.
Okay, so now it brings us back to our second portion of the public comment, again, three minutes, please come up and state your name and municipality, if anybody has anything else to add. Okay, sure, all right. Nothing to add on public comment number two, we'll close that down, and we do have a need for executive session, we will not be taking any action when we come out. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to go to executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
All right.
Make sure when you're calling for voice votes on school calendars, the best of all.
No, we're good.
That's your job.
That's why I made sure I brought it. There's a whole bunch of things you've got to mail in. What do you need, form or majority vote?
We're still waiting. I finally got paid for this job. I'd be rich.
Yeah.
It's all right. It's gonna get me through the pearly gates one day.
So, uh, I'll share something that's funny. Dave, is the mic on?
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor.
All right.
I pose. Motion carries.
Like to make motion adjourned?
I can't write that fast.
Come on, Andrew.
All right. All those in favor.
All right.
I pose, I abstain, motion carries.
Thanks, everyone.